We're going to continue today with local workforce training and certification programs. We have some exciting speakers during this portion of the program, and I'm really pleased to introduce the first individual. We're going to narrow our focus from the statewide level now down to Onslow County to some extent. I actually think this is the first time in a public forum and certainly on live television that I've introduced our speaker, our next speaker. And I'd like to start with a story. I'm using a little artistic license here, but hey, I've got the microphone right now and no one else does. So Henry Ford, Benjamin Franklin, Aristotle, Albert Einstein, and Noah Webster all walked into a restaurant. And they said, "We've got this idea. We want to start this thing called a community college. And you know, we need just the right leader for that community college." It was the first time they had ever agreed. And they said, "There's this guy out there named Ron Lingle, and he would be absolutely perfect." Community college system has been established in America since around 1901. Joliet College in Illinois was the first community college founded back in 1901. By the close of the 20th century, two-year colleges had trained about 5,743,000 students in America. If all of them knew perfectly what they should be hoping for, they would all have wished for Dr. Ron Lingle as their community college president. Dr. Lingle has served as the president of community college, Coastal Carolina Community College, since 1988, and before that was president of Danville Area Community College in Danville, Illinois. He earned his Bachelor of Science in Psychology, Master of Science in Psychological Counseling -- that reminds me, I probably need to see you later -- and his Doctor of Philosophy in Higher Education Administration at the University of Southern Mississippi. Dr. Lingle is also a veteran, having served in the U.S. Army Medical Service Corps from 1965 to 1969, where he received several commendations and awards. Dr. Lingle has been recognized throughout his career for excellence in his role as community college president and in his support of our United States military. He served as chairman of the Military Affairs Committee of the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber in 1991 to 1992, as chairman of the Board of Directors of the Chamber in 1992, and then again in 2002. He served as chairman of the Onslow County Economic Development Commission from 1998 to 2000, and he is currently serving on its executive committee. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a really great round of applause for the most awesome community college president in the galaxy, Dr. Ron Lingle.
I actually do love the kid. I think most of you know that I am not your usual North Carolina community college president. In fact, I would say of the 58 community colleges in North Carolina, there's probably only one that remotely resembles Coastal Carolina Community College, and that's Fayetteville Tech. So I'm going to start my remarks by saying to you that, you know, I'm a little bit out of the, like, the sort of fish out of water here. I don't see workforce development as being in any way in a military community separable from economic development, and I do not see either one of those in any way, shape, or form as being separate from what we do with the military. Those things to me are absolutely the warp and wolf of exactly the same fabric, and that's how I've operated since I came here. I will tell you that when I was being interviewed for this job back in 1988, I was very impressed with the board, hoping to get out of rural and heavily industrial-unionized Illinois. And I kept waiting for the board as they were interviewing me to say something about Camp Lejeune and MCAS New River, and not a word was said about that. And so they finally said, "Well, Dr. Lingle, do you have any questions?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "You know, I came from a place where virtually all we talked about was General Motors Central Foundry and Heister Lip Truck Corporation and Quaker Oats, largest oat processing plant, and on and on and on and on. And your industry clearly is the Marine Corps, and there hasn't been a word said about that. And, you know, what's going on?" And they said, "Well, our president served in the Army Reserves for a couple of years, and we really don't have much of a relationship with the Marine Corps." And I said, "Well, I'm telling you right now, unless you tell me otherwise, I'm going to do everything I can to bring this college so close to the Marine Corps that if they sneeze on Monday, we'll get a cold on Tuesday." So that has been, you know, my mantra from the time I've been here. I've taken some pretty harsh criticism for that 20, 25 years ago. Not so much now, as people have begun to realize just how much of an asset, how much of a driving force in this community in almost every way that our two Marine bases are. But anyhow, I also want to say, before I get started, that how much I appreciate the county commissioners doing this. I thought the earlier workshop that they did on housing and sort of the gloom and doom that had set in after all of these out-of-state contractors had come in and flooded the community with low-cost housing, that really changed the tone of the conversation, changed the way people began to look at, "This is simply one more bump in the road that we will handle, and thank you for doing that." I said at several of the last few State of the Community addresses that this is far and away, I mean, not even close, the best group of county commissioners that I have ever worked with, and so thank you all for that. So I'm going to give you some introductory remarks and then hopefully some sort of practical examples of who we are and how we approach workforce development as part of economic development and as both of those absolutely tied in with what we do with the Marine Corps. Nearly 20 years ago, Coastal Carolina Community College decided to take a dramatic and far-reaching turn in its entire strategic planning process. Instead of simply studying its history and its incremental development and projecting those factors for another 10 years, we decided to focus on what we thought were the major themes that the college was going to have to address during those rapidly changing years if it expected to be a major player, continue to be a major player in the developing future of Jacksonville and Onslow County. The four themes of that earlier strategic plan were educational quality, technology, teamwork and partnerships, and economic development. Nearly 10 years later, Coastal's faculty, staff, student leaders, and Board of Trustees updated those strategic themes for our next SACS accreditation, and the four themes at that time were educational quality, student success rates, teamwork and partnerships, and economic and workforce development. Now, the one change in all of that was technology falling out, and it certainly was not because of technology had become less important, it was because technology had become such a critical and indispensable part of our commitment to ever-increasing educational quality and higher and higher rates of student success that that 1997 strategic plan no longer even considered it to be a goal. It had simply become an indispensable reality that had to be addressed in all of our future educational planning and budgeting. A commitment to continuous improvement in the annual rates of student success replaced technology is one of the four major planning themes of the college. So I'll start by telling you that is the driving force for us. How successful have we been in nearly 15 years that the North Carolina Community College System has published the annual student success rates of all 58 published public community colleges? Coastal has led the North Carolina Community Colleges on those measures more times than any other college. And this past year, only Pemblico Community College, the smallest college in the state, was able to match Coastal's student success rate, and that's an important part of how we approach workforce development and economic development and what we have to market here. Onslow County is incredibly fortunate to host two of the most vital and strategically located training bases of the United States Marine Corps with a mind-boggling annual economic impact. Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune and Marine Corps Air Station New River are the undisputed economic generators of Onslow County. And while the presence of these two military training bases provides a level of economic stability that is unimaginable for most North Carolina communities, it also creates some unusual challenges for us. For example, a significant portion of the total landmass of Onslow County lies within the boundaries of the military reservation and therefore cannot be developed and added to the ad valorem tax base. And with a substantial portion of the married Marines and sailors living off the bases and out in the community, Onslow County has the formidable challenge of trying to support one of the fastest-growing public school systems in North Carolina as well as Coastal Carolina Community College with a very limited tax base. And this group of county commissioners have handled that better than any I've ever seen. Not surprisingly, the total annual budget for the Jacksonville-Onslow County Office of Economic Development is substantially smaller than that of most of the communities we have to compete with. The historically low unemployment rate of Onslow County, combined with the negative image which many site consultants associate with military communities, makes it very difficult to attract good industrial leads. And I can tell you that Sheila Pierce and Dan Oliver are unquestionably earning their paychecks, and the number of quality leads that they are working with at this time certainly has the JOED Board of Directors excited. On the other hand, Onslow County has a number of unique strengths that offer significant opportunities for economic and workforce development in the years ahead. Our community hosts thousands of visitors every year who come to enjoy some of the most beautiful and unspoiled beaches along the Crystal Coast. And an even larger number of family members and loved ones travel to Onslow County each year to visit with their young Marines and sailors. Coastal Center for Business and Industry Training works closely with the staff of the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber and the Onslow County Tourism Office to help the owners of local tourist attractions expand their businesses and get whatever focused training they need to have their employees become more productive and meet these needs. Another significant strength of Onslow County is the wealth of athletic fields and facilities as well as certified sports officials that are now available in both the civilian communities and the Marine bases. The college helped to establish and obtain funding to support the Onslow County Sports Commission, which actively recruits, organizes, and hosts athletic events and competitions. And the really exciting part of that is the community now has numerous quality hotels and dining facilities to host and feed large numbers of family members of visiting teams. And with the strong support of the current Board of County Commissioners, your community college was able to purchase, renovate, and equip the old Fuddruckers Restaurant to host our long-awaited culinary arts and hospitality management career programs. And I'm going to tell you, folks, that didn't come a moment too soon. We've got them banging on our doors already. I have been saying for years, and I'm going to continue to say, with as many military families living off the bases and out in the community, the opportunity for small business growth and development in this community is nearly boundless. Coastal Small Business Center teams with the Chamber to plan, fund, and host a broad array of seminars, short courses, workshops, and other services for some of the most creative, adaptive, and responsive small businesses in the nation. And our Small Business Center partners very closely with the staff of the Small Business and Technology Development Center of UNC Wilmington to provide specialized counseling services for existing businesses that are ready and eager for growth and expansion. That wonderful teamwork and partnership is another one of the true success stories of Onslow County. And every year, Coastal offers a superb, highly structured training program for prospective entrepreneurs in partnership with the North Carolina REO Program. While being a vital part of a highly visible team effort to recruit, retain, and create new jobs for the community has proven to be a significant and a very rewarding role for the college, it is actually a part of fulfilling the institution's state-mandated economic development mission that involves a fairly small number of our total professional and support staff. Providing current state-of-the-art technical training and retraining to meet local workforce needs, by contrast, involves the overwhelming majority of our faculty and staff every year. Coastal offers a broad range of certificate, diploma, and associate degree technical programs in both its curriculum and its continuing education divisions, and our faculty and staff take great pride in the quality of the graduates we produce every year. For more than 20 years, Coastal has stood behind a published commitment to retrain at our expense any employee whom a local employer considers to be deficient in either the knowledge or the skills required for successful job performance in his field. I don't know of any other public community college in the state that publishes that commitment. While being a vital part of a highly visible team effort to recruit, retrain, and create new jobs for the community has proven to be a significant and politically rewarding role for the college, it is actually part of fulfilling the institution's state-mandated economic development mission. Coastal offers a broad range of certificate -- I'm about to repeat myself there. I'm going to stop at that point and say that we've got some real opportunities and challenges coming ahead of us. I'm going to go off the map here for just a second to talk about those. I think most of you know that what happens to our two economic generators is going to drive virtually everything else that happens in this community. And I'll give you just a couple of examples. About 15, 20 years ago, we were working with Bruce Gumbah as the Economic Development Director for Onslow County, and we had heard through our ties to Headquarters Marine Corps that the Marine Corps was going to be pressured to get involved in special operations, and that they were going to take what was then called the Fourth Marine Expeditionary Brigade Anti-Terrorist, stand it up, and they were going to put it in Norfolk, Virginia. And we said, "Why in the world would they put a Special Operations Command for the Marine Corps in Norfolk, Virginia?" So we put a carload of people, mostly former Marines that still had very strong ties to the leadership of the Marine Corps, and we drove up to Norfolk, and we met with Lieutenant General Marty Burnt, who was the commanding general of Marine Corps Forces Command, and we said, "Marty, why are you going to put this new Special Operations Unit of the Marine Corps in Norfolk?" He said, "What the hell are you talking about?" He said, "You know, we're going to stand it up, but it's not going to be in Norfolk." And we said, "Well, that's not what we're hearing." So he called his secretary and said, "You know, get me the facilities people at Headquarters Marine Corps on the phone," and he did. And all of a sudden, he turned red as a beet, and he said, "You're going to do what?" He said, "You're not putting that unit in Norfolk. We don't have the room for it. We don't have any place for them to train. Housing up here is extremely expensive. You know, you're talking about a unit that, you know, could reach, you know, 2,000 people." So they said, "Well, sir, you know, where would you want it?" He said, "At Stone Bay in Camp Lejeune." Guess where it is, folks? Stone Bay, Camp Lejeune. Okay, now, we're talking about economic development and workforce development and training for growth and all of that. There's not been an economic development project in the history of Onslow County that has had the economic impact of MARSOC going to Stone Bay. I mean, go down there and look at the Sneed Ferry area and see the quality housing now. The road's been -- the bridge has been updated, the roads are expanded, the economy of Sneed Ferry is booming now as a result of all of that. So that's just, you know, one of the examples. The other one that I would point out is that a lot of people forget that at the worst part of the fighting in Iraq and Afghanistan, the Marine Corps was so -- under so much pressure that it was literally sending its troops out on a six-month basis. They would come home just long enough to spend a little time with their families, kind of get their affairs in order, retrain, go right back out six months later, and it was just putting a tremendous amount of wear and tear on the families, on the Marines and sailors. And so the commandant of the Marine Corps at that time, General Conway, was invited in to talk to the Secretary of Defense, and he said, "General, what do you need?" And he said, "I need more Marines. I need to stop wearing my Marines out and destroying their family life." And the secretary said, "How many more Marines do you need?" And he said, "Well, I have 182,000 now. I need 202, 20,000 Marines." And the Secretary of Defense said, "Done. What else do you need?" As a result of that, our portion of that 20,000 Marines, something like 6,507,000 additional Marines came here. Four and a half billion dollars with a B came from Headquarters Marine Corps and Congress because we did not have the facilities to be able to train that number of Marines in that kind of time period. And so you look at that and tie that together with MARSOC, I mean, that has been more economic development, more growth in the community, more trained workforce than all of the stuff that we've done in Onslow County in probably 50 years. So when we talk about, you know, the partnership that we have with our Marines and sailors and how important that partnership is, I mean, we really mean it, folks. I mean, it's not just the right thing to do for the country, the right thing to do for the state of North Carolina, the right thing to do as the host community for so many of these valiant young warriors and their families, but it's the right thing to do economically. And so I'm going to close by just simply pointing out to you that there is yet another -- everything that happens with the Marine Corps is dramatic. I've learned that. I'm an old Army guy, and thank God things were not as dramatic in the Army when I was there. I don't think I could have stood it, but the Marines are good at that. They handled it very, very well. I think most of you that have been studying what's going on at the national level in our economy are aware of the term "sequestration." I don't think most people are aware what that really is and what the long-term implications of it are. Basically, what it amounts to is because the Republicans in Congress could not get the Democrats in Congress to agree to slow the growth, the out-of-control growth, of the costs of the entitlement programs, of Social Security, of Medicaid, and so on. And the Democrats could not get the Republicans in Congress to slow the growth of seemingly an endless pot of money that they were throwing at the military services. Somebody got behind closed doors and said, "Okay, here's the deal. You know, we're not going to give you any more money for the entitlement programs." And they said, "Okay, if you don't, we're not going to give you any more money for the military." So for several years now, the military has been operating on the same budget that it got a couple or three years ago, and that's starting to hurt. I mean, we're starting to see it now, and we're going to continue to see it, you know, if it does not change. Now, what are the implications of that for us, for workforce training, for economic development in Onslow County, one of the major, two major host communities of the Marine Corps in the entire continental United States? They are huge because if sequestration continues, and it seems to be working politically for both the Republicans and the Democrats in Congress, then there's going to be a point in which there will be no more fat of any kind to cut out. The Marine Corps can only cut its total number of combat Marines to a certain level, and then it gets to the point where, you know, they simply can't carry out their mission anymore. And once that happens, all of the services have had for years now a number of bases that they have no use for anymore. They're obsolete, there's nobody actually training there, and yet there are powerful Congress leaders who don't want to see those shut down because that makes them look bad. Well, there's going to come a point where they're just simply not affordable anymore. And then if the Marine Corps becomes much smaller than it is right now, then there's a question whether or not it needs a West Coast base and a major East Coast training base. And we have to win that battle if that battle comes. I mean, we simply have to, or you're not going to want to think about the consequences of what the economy and workforce development and economic development and everything else is for Onslow County. So, I mean, those are things that we're dealing with. So the folks that say to me, "You know, why do you spend so much time with the Marines?" And I say, "Economic development, economic development, economic development." And they look at me like something large and green is eating my face. And I'm going to say to you, you know, "If that's where the money is, that's economic development, period." So now, having said all that, I will tell you that this community has made -- when I came here, my wife says I am a really depressing pessimist. This place has made me into almost a raving optimist. If there are nine, 10 possibilities out there for the Marine Corps, for Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, Marine Corps Air Station New River, and Onslow County, and nine of them are bad, the one good one will happen here. I'm -- God likes this place. And so, yes, I do spend a lot of time dealing with the Marines at all levels. I didn't understand 15 years ago when General Jones became commandant of the Marine Corps. He said, "Ron, I want you on the Board of Visitors of Marine Corps University." I said, "Okay, what the hell is Marine Corps University?" And then I found out And, and then I found out that they didn't really want me on the Board of Marine Corps University. And the Commandant said, I don't really care whether they do or not. And so for the last 15 years, I have served on the Board of Marine Corps University. Those are things that, as far as I'm concerned, and we've got people now throughout this community, this group of county commissioners have, have met more times with the leadership of, of our, our bases and Headquarters Marine Corps than any that we've worked with in, in my entire career. And that's got to continue, folks. I mean, you know, things are either going to get better or they're going to get a lot worse. And, and I'm, I'm a believer in Onslow County, you know, we have put the right people in place. We've, we've done visionary things here. We've made, made the right sacrifices at the right time and I like our odds. Thank you.
Just a reminder to those in the audience and also those that might be watching by TV, all of the presentations today will be made available on our website, www.onslowcountync.gov/hr. So please avail yourselves of those resources in the weeks to come and hopefully it'll be of benefit to you. To benefit of, to all of us this morning is going to be our next speaker. I had the pleasure of working with Dr. Lesley Eason at the Onslow County Board of Education for many years. Dr. Eason is with us today. She is the Assistant, or excuse me, Associate Superintendent for Instructional Services and Continuous Improvement for the Onslow County School System. Dr. Eason began her career teaching English at Southwest High School. As a Richlands High graduate, I will forego the joke that just went into my mind about Southwest and hope my wife forgives me, she's from Southwest. She was later promoted to Assistant Principal and Principal of Dixon High School. In 2007, Dr. Eason was appointed Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and Continuous Improvement, where she was integral in helping to lead Onslow County schools to be the first in the state of North Carolina to achieve district accreditation through Advanced Ed. Dr. Eason has been a champion for career and technical education and workforce development programs in Onslow County's secondary schools, supporting the implementation of career academics and career towers. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Dr. Lesley Eason.
Mr. Hudson, thank you for foregoing the joke. I, I just wasn't sure where that would end up, so thank you for that. Good morning, everyone. I believe at this point in our summit program, we can all agree that the emergence of patterns and trends is very obvious. And as we segue into the work of the Onslow County School System, not only is it obvious at this point in the program this morning, it's also a very intentional effort of any great organization. And I'm very pleased to share with you that the Onslow County School System is a truly great organization. It really is quite a metamorphosis within any organization when you can look at yourself very discriminately on a daily basis and realize that even when you have the great pleasure of working with three, four and five-year-olds as part of your daily mission, that you still serve the greater community as an economic driver. The Onslow County School System very much realizes our economic responsibilities, not only to Onslow County, but to this entire region. As we look at the importance of identifying workforce courses of study, I would be remiss if I did not share with you that as we look at that as a primary concept in all of our planning in the school system, when we look at those workforce courses of study, basically we're looking at the beautiful integration and combination of what it really takes to serve our accelerated children, to serve our exceptional children, to serve our first-generation college-goers, and to really be very, very focused on what it takes to meet the needs on a daily basis of 26,500 students. The real beauty in all of that is, all of that, everything that we do is workforce development. So as we look at the courses and the programs that we want to offer, basically what we're faced with is a very critical balance between what are our local needs, what are the national trends showing us? And then at the end of every day, taking it back to the hopes, the dreams and the aspirations of an individual child and making sure that we can melt all of that data coming in and all of that data coming out. Our mandates are clear and mandate may be a little strong, self-imposed mandates in many cases and really put together over time through a lot of great stakeholder input. The Onslow County School System's purpose, vision and mission are very clear. We live it each and every day. And we also find ourselves in direct alignment with the vision of the state of North Carolina. And we know that it is the course of the work of this school system to ensure that we're giving our kids every opportunity to leave our school system career and college-ready and with the skills and tools necessary to make that great next decision in whatever that decision may be for an individual family and an individual student. We can drill a lot of what we do down to simple awareness and opportunities. We need to make sure that our students are aware of all of the different possibilities out there and we need to make sure that we're using all available data to have the opportunities for all of our students to find that success. Now, we've looked at a lot of data this morning and I have to tell you, going into several of our breaks, I was wildly excited to start seeing all of those arrows pointing in the same direction. That alignment is critical to the organizations that form all of our great partnerships. When we look at the workforce, as the school system looks at the workforce in Onslow County, and I know this graphic is probably a little bit difficult to see, but basically what you see is the bulk of our current workforce has somewhere between a high school diploma and one to three years of college experience. That's data that we look at on an annual basis as we begin to make one-year decisions, three-year decisions, five-to-10-year decisions, as we identify what that course of work really needs to be in a comprehensive public school system. One of our data sources that we study quite a bit, and you have seen much of this echo today in a variety of different ways, but when we look at, at the data specific to southeastern North Carolina, we can use this data as a source to project out, as you can see on the screen, all the way to 2022. So within the life of a school system, what are some of those critical decisions that we need to make to ensure that we're really addressing what, what we're looking at in terms of economics, job availability, required training, all of those things? What you see going on in southeastern North Carolina, just by way of this screen, is by 2022, we're seeing increased need for areas such as biomedical engineers, personal care aides, brokerage clerks, statisticians. We can continue to look out at those projections and see that there are increasing needs going towards 2022 in the areas of financial services, home health aides. That kind of data is utilized on a daily basis in our school system to ensure that we're making the most informed and most critical decisions for the programs and the initiatives that you will see honored within the public school system. But we've also got to look very clearly at really kind of the, the, just kind of right there where we are right now. We have children in our school systems and at the same time, we have very obvious openings to the types of jobs that exist right now in southeastern North Carolina. So as we make those critical decisions, you can see for yourself in the, through now to 2022, we're looking at the greatest number of annual openings in the areas of food preparation, retail sales, waiters and waitresses, cashiers. And I'm not going to belabor that point, but we know, and I think it was mentioned earlier rather eloquently, that Onslow County currently finds itself as an exporter of a lot of great workers who have received a high-quality education through the school system and the community college in this area. So we look at this data because ultimately we want some of our best and our brightest to stay with us. We're doing a great job in Onslow County and whereas it is quite an honor to send great workers to other parts of the state, we also know that it would be quite an honor to ensure that we could keep many of them within the geographic area of Onslow County. So the unique part that we bring to the program today, and I told one of our board members at the break, we've looked at a lot of great data today. Well, the Onslow County School System has some current data for you from seventh graders. And I don't know how much experience you have on a daily basis with seventh graders, but let me assure you that they have a lot to share and they love to share it. One of the pieces that we often use in the Onslow County School System is not only looking at all of the national and state trend data, but we have a wealth of information that sits in our classrooms each and every day. And as we look at our courses of study, we often go directly to our students. Our most recent survey was of our current seventh graders. And as you will see, not only are they our seventh graders today, they are our graduating class of 2021. This is the class, one of several, that will be the most intimately involved in the projections that we are currently looking at from 2012 to 2022. So we know that projection data, but do we know what our children are telling us as they get to that monumental event of 2021 and graduating? We gave our last survey for our seventh graders in the fall of 2015, so this is pretty recent data, had approximately 800 respondents. And as you can see, even when we get to the results, had just about as nice of a split between females and males as you could possibly hope for. I want you to remember back to the picture that we had a few minutes ago. And we realize in our current workforce that the majority of our workers are somewhere between that high school diploma and one to three years of, of community college experience. I want you to notice that that's not what our seventh graders are saying at this point in their career. As a school system, this community depends on us to listen to the voices of our students, to look at the hope that still exists within them and to figure out a way to deal with the data that we have, but to also honor the aspirations of the students who sit in our classrooms. And it really is a critical balance, but it's a critical balance that I believe we take tremendous pride in. As you can see from this, right now, our seventh graders will tell you overwhelmingly that they are preparing to go to a four-year university. Now, I would ask all of you to think back, if you can, to the time when you were in seventh grade. For the most part, that's what we know. We know that our parents have charged us with going to school. We know that our parents have charged us with doing a really great job in our classes. And we honor and find our seventh graders at a place where they are within their educational career. When we look at the opportunities and the awareness, it really is the responsibility of the school system to strike the critical balance. What does all of our data tell us and then ultimately what are our students sharing with us? As you can see, according to our seventh graders, when we look at our avenues of opportunities and when we look at the career pathways that we hope each year this school system can afford those students, you will see in rank order, they will tell you overwhelmingly their first choice, they want to work in the area of sports and entertainment marketing. But then you'll begin to see some very nice alignment with so much of the data that has been shared today. They recognize even through a 13-year-old lens, the need in the area of medical, STEM, aerodynamics. We've talked about culinary this morning. We've talked about the service industry. We've talked about what is unique to southeastern North Carolina. Our students may not necessarily be using all of our lingo, but I think as you look at what they are rank ordering for us, we've got to give them a lot of credit because they not only recognize those things within themselves, but they also recognize the areas that they can serve this community. Now, I think we need to go back to sports and entertainment marketing for just a moment. At some point, we do have an obligation to share with our students that you might not play Major League Baseball. You might not get to play in the NFL or the NBA. You might not get to play Major League Soccer. But based on all of our data, I think we can all agree that we have an obligation not to squash the hopes, the dreams and the aspirations of the students in, in our county. You may not be the NFL player, but through the guidance of great educators and great adults, there may be a whole nother realm of employment for you that would keep you very closely related to that. So we try very hard to honor where our students are, but at the same point, choose courses of study that will best serve the greater Onslow area and the greater southeastern North Carolina area. So ultimately, to conclude, as we look at employment, regional data and need, please know that this school system is very focused on the need for our students to graduate career and college-ready, to not only have those hopes and aspirations, but to have the skills and the decision-making ability to take that next step based on their accomplishments during the time that they're with us. It does go back to awareness. We talk about it all the time. We're preparing students for jobs that don't even exist yet. I'd like to share with you in the Onslow County School System, we don't always talk about soft skills. We like to refer to those soft skills as critical skills and we're able to integrate that in so many of the things that we're able to do. Onslow County Schools Goal One takes it to a new level for us because we realize that it's got to be a personal opportunity for each child who walks through our, through our doors each and every day. So that's just a quick look at some of our data. We enjoy our data from our students. We especially enjoy when it aligns with our national, state and regional trends. And I think what you're going to see from the next young man who's going to present for us is the realization of all of this data and what we're able to do through many of our programs in the Onslow County School System. Thank you.